Good morning, everyone. It's 8:30. Let's go ahead and draw this meeting to order. I'd like to first take note that Ms. Mayor Gunter is out this morning with the flu, and it came as a surprise to me about two minutes ago that as Mayor Pro Tem, I will be operating as functioning as Mayor Pro Tem this morning. So with that, we've called this meeting to order at 8:32 on September 8th, 2022. And with that, we'd like to start with our Chaplain prayer and pledges.
Good morning, everyone. Let us pray. Father, thank you for the opportunity to invoke prayer in your word into this gathering of city officials, leaders, concerned citizens. Lord, your word declares that we should acknowledge you in all of our ways, and you would direct our paths. You said in your word, Lord, that if we delight ourselves in you, that you would give us the desires of our heart. So, Father, I pray that you would give these servant leaders knowledge, wisdom, and courage on how to deal with the issues in our communities, our families, the facilities and businesses, and any other family and problems that we may have facing this city. You said in your word, God, that in Jeremiah 29 and 11, that you already know the plans that you have for our city, plans to prosper us, plans that will give us a bright future and a hope. And so we pray, oh God, that you would bless our city and bless these leaders to work together in unity to tackle the agenda items today. Lastly, you said that we should pray for those in authority over our city. So I pray and lift up our mayor, that you would give her good health today. I pray for her staff and assistants, the city council members, the city manager, and every person in the department that is instrumental in leading and directing our city. And lastly, I pray that you would bless us with economic prosperity. May you draw in and attract to our city industry, businesses, corporations that will produce jobs and revenue, and help us to prosper and grow. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen. Let us pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state, under God, one indivisible.
This morning, we have a couple proclamations and reclamation, recognitions to do. The first one is proclamation of September 15th through October 15th, 2022, as the National Hispanic Heritage Month. Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated nationwide from September 15th through October 15th each year. Observation began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover the month that is celebrated today. September 15th is significant because it is the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September 16th and 18th respectively. The San Angelo Hispanic Heritage Museum and Cultural Center looks forward to celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month with the greater community and seeks to establish a museum to highlight the rich heritage arts, histories, food, music, and traditions of this wonderful culture. This year's theme is "Unidos Inclusively for a Stronger Nation." This month celebrates honors and pays tribute to all the contributions to our city and our society. The City of San Angelo recognizes the valuable contributions made by the citizens of Hispanic descent to all aspects of American life, including leadership in business, civil service, culture, education, military, ranching, and religion. The San Angelo Hispanic Heritage Museum and Cultural Center organization is committed to recognizing Hispanic culture and heritage as an important part of the city and its strong inclusive community. Now, therefore, I, Tom Thompson, Mayor Pro Tem of City of San Angelo on Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim September 15th through August 15th, 2022, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in San Angelo, Texas, and call to observation all its residents. Awesome. So we're going to bring up, we have some people here to take this award. Our proclamation.
Thank you. We're going to kick off our Hispanic Heritage Month celebration at City Hall next Thursday, a week from today, at 10 o'clock. You're all welcome to join us. We'll have some entertainment and a speaker. Our speaker will be Lieutenant Mike Hernandez from the San Angelo Police Department. And we're excited about the future of our initiative to create a Hispanic Heritage Museum and a cultural center. We're not there quite yet, but we're getting there pretty quick. So I want to thank our community, especially city council and mayor, for their support in our initiative to get this done. Thank you.
So before we leave, I think Ms. Rivera, do you want to introduce these students here? Let them know who we have attending.
And everyone, first we have, is, I'm not going to. Good morning. We have Danica Lombraña, Maddie Stallings, Christian Vasquez, and then at the very end, we have Sheng Wen Hong. Thank you for letting us do this. And we are Las Amitas y Charitos de Por Concho.
The second one here is important to us here at the city. We're going to recognize Vicki Porter's retirement after 31 years of service with the City of San Angelo. So if anybody here can think of 31 years of somewhere they want to be, Vicki deserves it right here. So I've got a proclamation we want to read. Vicki Porter, Operations Administrative Assistant Senior, will retire from the City of San Angelo September 15th, 2022, after 31 years of dedicated service. Vicki started her career with the city September 3rd, 1991, and has been a staple of public works over three decades. Despite numerous changes in policy, structure, and employees, Vicki has been there to provide stability throughout the transitions. Over the years, Vicki's been committed to her role as public servant. Her work has impacted hundreds of residents as she assisted many citizens throughout the years. Vicki's helpful attitude has not only improved the quality of life for many citizens, but many of her customers are now considered her friends. Her welcoming smile, words, and hugs show how important the relationships she's created truly are. For the operations department, Vicki's experience has been invaluable. In her words, "It's been fun to watch everything come full circle." The knowledge that she brings to the department has helped anchor many of the core procedures and policies that are in place today. She has not only provided knowledge, insight, and guidance during the daily operations of the department, but has been a crucial advisor on several complex issues requiring institutional knowledge. Vicki will be... Why did you giggle during that? All right? Just wanted to know, all right? Anyway, Vicki will be missed by many, both citizens and coworkers. We wish to honor Vicki for her service and congratulate her on this well-deserved retirement. We are blessed to have such a dedicated employee who remained committed to the service of our great city for 31 years. Therefore, I, Tom Thompson, Mayor Pro Tem, the City of San Angelo, on behalf of the city council, recognize and applaud Vicki Porter for her achievement and positive determination to make a difference in San Angelo. Vicki, I want to give you this right here in recognition as a thank you from the city. And number one, I'll give you the mic and let you share a few words. Yes, you have to. It says right there. You can do it. You can do it.
First of all, it's been an honor and a privilege to work for the city. I could not have asked for a better place to be employed. Y'all have become my family, my support system, my friends, and in my deepest time of needs, who was there for me? In the year 2019, when the tornado came through, so did my family at the city. And I could never be more grateful for y'all. Thank y'all very much. It's been an honor.
Ronnie, go see the picture. It's a learning and process here. It's not hard for you. It's hard for us. Now we'll move into public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the dais, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit the remarks to less than three minutes. Do we have any public comment today?
Good morning, Council Charlotte Anderson, Executive Director of Keep San Angelo Beautiful. And I'm here this morning with Ms. Morgan Jupiter. We're real excited to be with you today to talk a little trash. We'd like to give you the good side of trash for a change. So recently, Morgan is with Student Services for Angelo State University, and she was aware of an article that was published that inadvertently blamed Angelo State University students for some trash on Loop 306. And she jumped into action very quickly and organized a group of students. So from a Monday to a Thursday, she had 80 students available for a trash pickup on Loop 306 a couple of weekends ago. So I just wanted you to know that there are people out there that really appreciate our community, want to jump in when it's needed, take responsibility and make a difference. And the group that did this was Greek Life from Angelo State University. So in the little handout, we're sharing a few of the details. They had 80 to 90 students, over 240 volunteer hours, which was a $6,800 value to the City of San Angelo. Over 13 organizations participated. The most interesting item that they recovered was half of a social security card. So they really got a kick out of that. About 90 bags of trash, 1,350 pounds of trash. So just very grateful for their assistance in the community, and again, taking charge and making a difference. And Morgan was a leader with Brianna, and they just did a fantastic job. So again, we do have a fall sweep coming up. It's October 8th, and we've provided information for you on that. We invite you to join us. If you're not doing, we'll be meeting at the Bosc at 8:00 a.m. for event check-in, and we invite everybody to join us for the cleanup on October 8th. It is a citywide cleanup. And then we also provided a snapshot for you with up-to-date details of all of our activities, events, and accomplishments. So thank you again. Thank you for your support for Keep San Angelo Beautiful, especially City Councilman Harry Thomas for your vision. We're hoping that we're continuing to do all the things that you would expect from our group, and especially helping mentor young ladies at Angelo State University like Ms. Morgan.
Morgan, just first thing, anybody that can gather up 80 to 90 college students and get them out to pick up trash on the interstate deserves a round of applause. All right? I have one, and I can't get him to make his bed. But with that, I think Harry Thomas has a few words here to say.
Yeah, I want to just say thank you to Charlotte. First of all, we've gotten a message out to a number of the citizens in the community over the last couple of years. But certainly when, and as Tom said, certainly when you get a number of college students out on a Saturday morning to pick up trash, to do what we need to do in this community, then people realize what they can do with just a little bit of time, and certainly appreciate that. I know this October the 8th situation is, if we can get a few more volunteers out there, we will be done in a short period of time. So anybody that wants to keep this community beautiful, get trash off the street, talk to Charlotte. We'll put you to work on October the 8th. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Charlotte. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment? Come on up to the mic, please.
Hello, good morning. My name's Michelle Zerubek, and I'm the Director of Cassie's Place Animal Rescue. I'm sorry, this is a little doom and gloom compared to the awesome Keeping San Angelo Beautiful, but it does fall in line with that as well. Part of Keeping San Angelo Beautiful would fall in line with our pet overpopulation. And as all of you know, over the past week, there's been a lot of critical things happening at the shelter, pictures that have circulated that showed the situation that was taking place in the shelter. They were not altered or inaccurate. I walked the shelter twice last week, and it was heartbreaking. You see staff that is trying their hardest in there. They are probably overworked. There's too many animals. The facility itself is not set up for the number of animals that there are. And I'm sure this is all something that's being discussed. We have a two-and-a-half acre facility. We house animals every day. I understand the hardships it takes to take care of animals on a daily basis, keep staff on track, have proper vetting and cleaning processes. I think that this is a huge turning point for the city and the shelter and the animal care that we can provide in our community as well as representatives of our city. I believe that there is an unhealthy relationship, unhealthy codependent relationship utilizing only one nonprofit to maintain the adoptions out there. I think that you have an opportunity to utilize more of your volunteer base in the community if you opened that back up. I think that with that codependency, there is blinders being put on in things and cases that are taking place out there to prevent the true welfare of the animals itself. There have been cases that I have been told about or that I am aware of that I think need to be handled. And you know, when you have, say, a moldy fruit in a basket, you don't remove just the moldy fruit, just the one. You remove multiple, and you may remove the whole basket. There are people out there with Concha Valley paws with the shelter that have extremely compassionate hearts, and they're doing their very best. But I think that it's time to recognize the ones that need some change.
Morgan, thank you for your comment.
Yes. Oh, did you have something? No.
Are you done with your public comment?
I am.
All right. Karen, do you want to make public comment?
I think I do, yes. I, probably not unlike the other people sitting up here, have received a number of calls, messages over the last few days. And I acknowledge Ms. Zerubek's comments and would like to agree that I think the dialogue needs to be expanded. Obviously, the director of the shelter, their first responsibility is to be a good advocate for the animals, for their employees, for the shelter itself, and to be a good partner with other concerned entities. So whatever we can do to grow that conversation, make it healthier, do the right thing for the animals, deliver transparency and documentation. I have so many comments that have been forwarded to me. I could probably read for another five minutes. But I definitely want this conversation to continue until we reach a better place. We're not there yet.
Thank you, Karen. And just to note, there's been several discussions, and there's a lot of hard work behind the scenes from staff to address the situation, and it'll be brought up further in additional meetings as we move further.
Tommy? Can I say something?
Absolutely.
Okay. In the midst of this situation, I think there's some people out there that need to be applauded. It was over 60 people in San Angelo that opened their doors and their hearts to foster these animals while they're trying to take care of the problems out at the animal shelter.
If I may? We've had a recognitions, and I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize Allison Strube, who is sitting out there right now in the crowd. Allison, would you please stand up? Actually, if you don't mind, would you please come up here to the front?
You know I was going to pull her agenda item just to make her come up.
I had to beat you to it.
Let's bring her up.
Allison Strube has been with the city now for seven years. I wanted you to tell these director, and this is very difficult for me. She announced recently she is accepting a position with another entity. And by the way, that entity is very blessed to have you. Allison has done a tremendous job while she's been here with the city. From winter storm Yuri, you know, to the water contamination, to whatever it is, she's always been there at the very front looking for solutions, a very innovative individual. I can tell you that she will be greatly missed with the city. And she and I have talked about this. I've tried so hard to keep you here, but I definitely respect the fact that you sometimes do things that are best for you and your family. So we're very appreciative. I have a whole list of things that Allison's accomplished with the city. And I was going to read them out, but I'd rather just leave it at the fact that she has done so much to address the water situation in the future, to ensure that we have water for the next 50, 75, 100 years. And for that alone, this community is indebted to you. I just wanted to call you up here and say, hey, Allison, if you change your mind, we're here. If you try that other position, doesn't work out, we're here for you. We'd love to have you back. But with that said, I have the greatest respect and appreciation for you, and everybody that does the staff does. And I just wanted to express that in the open. We wish you the absolute best. We love you. And hopefully, we'll see you around very often, okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much. But thank y'all, and I truly work with the best people. So, thank you.
Is there any additional public comment?
Good morning. My name is Christopher McGuffin. I'm the vetting coordinator at Cassie's Place Rescue. I work directly under Michelle, and I too toured the shelter last week. I've been associated with Cassie's and working with them coming up on five years now. I've done caregiving in the kennels, cleaning, scrubbing, the dirtiest things you can think of. And I do applaud the staff at the shelter because when we were there, that's all they were doing, doing what they could do with the means and the tools that they had. As I've grown at Cassie's, and Cassie's has grown because of the implementation of certain standards and procedures that Michelle has overseen, we've been able to keep high levels of sanitation, not just where the animals are, but in the facilities as a whole. I think right now, a big expectation is that even when we all came in this building today, that we were going to see a certain level of cleanliness on the floors and the halls, public access areas, and in the shelter right now, that just is not existing. It's a sad state because every building that this city has, if I go out to the lake, and there's a maintenance building out there for work crews and stuff, that building is cleaner than the shelter general areas. And I was born here. I was raised here. My family is given to this community in different ways. And it's sad for me to see such a dip in the attention level given to one thing. Not just one thing in particular, but one thing that's literally housing hundreds of lives. If this was a nursing home, we'd all be up in arms. And I'm not saying the community is not up in arms, but there has to be some kind of base level of cleanliness and hygiene put in place. There's got to be some kind of state of disaster or complete oversight and review happen. When COVID hit and it was prevalent in the community, we were getting daily reports on City of San Angelo website about the level of people infected, the number of positive cases. You know, we've had, you know, what many of us in the community consider a disaster happening out there. And it can't be fixed unless it's brought to light, and it's continually brought to light and addressed. So I know that you're all doing what you can, how you can, and I know there's a lot of pull and tug and politics. But what I do see is that every time something comes up with the shelter, it comes up, there's a lot of people that get flared up, and they want change, and two months to six months later, it's a non-issue, basically. There's a couple people still very concerned, but for the most part, the attention is gone. That's all I had. Thank you.
Christopher, thank you for your comment and your conviction. Is there any additional public comment? Wait till you get up to the mic so whatever I can hear.
My name is Jill Hadad, and I live in Santa Rita on Montecito. I was here during all the spay and neuter stuff too, and I haven't been since. So I'd like to say that, you know...
Go ahead and step up to the mic.
My information is...
I can't hear you in the back.
My information is limited. I don't have numbers. So I don't know how many animals are coming into the shelter and how many are going out. But I know from my personal experience in being just a citizen here that I get calls from other rescue people at least three times a month, four times a month, where I am going to pick up a dog and scan them with my microchip scanner, and then I'm housing the dog for the weekend. So because we don't have enough ACO members to come pick up, we don't have the facility to house those dogs. I feel like there just needs to be a shift in budget, or at least the conversation to, how can we make this work differently so that there's a place for dogs to go and that there's not dogs on the street? I mean, the community is just, if you go to some parts of the city, there's dogs everywhere. It's like, you know, it's like a third world country. I mean, I guess my thought is that there just needs to be more ACO. There needs to be more, I don't know. There just needs to be a conversation about the shelter and the way that everything's being run up there. So, thank you. That's all.
Karen, do you want to say something?
Yes, sorry, once again. So many of the comments that I received over the last few days included people that were concerned because they wished to volunteer and to be helpful, but were not allowed to participate. So I just want to bring that to the conversation. I think there are willing hands, willing hearts, lots of people that desire to be of service. So when these conversations that you referenced, Tom, go forward, I'd like for that to be noted, that we need to be good partners with people that want to be our partners.
Thank you, Karen. You've already done one, ma'am. It's limited to one.
If I may? So we've heard the calls, the comments, the emails, the text messages, phone calls, visits from city council members. visits from city council members, but prior to that, of course, we definitely had been working on a plan. One of the objectives initially was to create a no-kill shelter. The problem with a no-kill shelter, when enough dogs aren't adopted out, you get overpopulated, and we definitely, I'm an animal lover myself, but on our end, we have a core service as far as the animal shelter and why we have that service, and really is to keep the community safe, from disease, rabies, dog bites, and what have you, and that's what that facility is intended for. We've had it to where we're calling it a no-kill, we just don't have the resources, and I know that Morgan, her heart's in the right place, she doesn't want to destroy any of the animals, I sure don't want to do that either, but we do want to make sure that we maintain the facility at capacity or below capacity, actually, so those dogs running loose out there, they have a place to actually go if we pick them up. But regardless, there is a planning place that will be shared with the community, with the council members, and we will be implementing and moving forward. I do like the idea of having as many volunteers as possible to assist, because we don't want to destroy those animals, we want to make sure that if there's an opportunity to adopt them out, let's do that. So, we hear you, we understand where you're coming from, we are working on the plan, and again, we'll be presenting that plan and also talking with some of y'all to ensure that we get your thoughts and opinions on what we're doing as well. But with that said, I don't know, Harry, you want to comment?
Absolutely, Harry, go ahead.
I'm gonna take a different approach. We know that we've got some issues at the animal shelter, but we're overpopulated for one reason, and that is the citizens are not taking care of, taking responsibility for what they need to do. Spay and neuter, making sure that these particular pets are kept housed in their own homes or in their backyards, where they're not roaming the streets. So, we want to reach out to the citizens, some of them may be in the audience today, and say, we need your help. If we're gonna try to do this, it's gotta be a partnership, and it's gotta be a partnership with all the citizens that have pets. They need to be responsible for those particular pets, and if we do that, then we're probably not gonna have the issues that we've got at the animal shelter right now. So let's take an approach like this to be proactive instead of reactive on this.
Thank you, Karen. Is there any additional public comment?
Hello, good morning. I just have...
I need your name and your district.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my name is Kate Kirkland. And I'm sorry, was there something additional?
You know what, SMD, what district you're in.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in District Three.
Cool, thank you.
Okay. It's just more of a statement and a comment. I live out in the Bluffs. I've had two dogs now dumped because they are county dogs, and it's my understanding, and I could be incorrect, I have a husband that's a sheriff's deputy, and it's my understanding they will not pick up county dogs due to overflow, so they know, they know it's okay, well, I shouldn't say okay. They know, I'll dump a dog out there, and I understand that I'm not county, but we're far enough out, and there's not really much they can do, and it's usually the weekend, so vets aren't open, we can't check chips, we can't really do anything. And like, I'm a dog mom, and I have several dogs, I have rescue dogs. I recently did adopt a dog from the shelter, that is a whole other thing. I've lived in this county for two, maybe almost three years, it is a whole other thing. The rescue dogs are well taken care of, I came from Colorado with my dogs. The shelter dog that I adopted, it took four different shampooings to get rid of that smell. Those people work hard, they did tell me I could go into the shelter, I saw feces, urine coming out of those kennels, and I know those people work hard, and I did look on the city website, 'cause I thought, you know what, maybe I'll go ahead and look and see about a job. Those jobs do not pay, and I do work for the county, I do make a fair amount, but the city does not pay those shelter workers very much at all, so I can't say that I'd want to apply. And I know at one time, and I could be incorrect, because I have not lived in this state, let alone county, very long, but my understanding at one time, the county jail had the trustees help. I don't know if that's something that could be reconsidered. And it is the city and county of Tom Green, and I understand that it's not up to the county, but can they not work together? I do pay city and county tax, so why can they not work together on this? I mean, that is my question to you.
We're not obligated to respond here, but I will say, when you try to involve county employees on a city project and things, there's scheduling, there's projects, I used to work up Stock Show and Rodeo, we use county trustees, city trustees, there's a lot of scheduling and some inconsistencies on scheduling. I get your passion, I mean, there's been four of you that have come up today and talked about it. I grew up in a vet clinic, so 18 years of growing up in there, cleaning kennels and all that, they don't work on the same schedule that our kids do. I mean, pets are going to just go through a normal biological process. We get that, Michael Dane has worked on it, I mean, Karen's had lots of phone calls. I want you to know, we've got our heart worked on trying to solve this problem, it's not gonna be simple, and it's not gonna be easy, but we are addressing it as best we can. I appreciate your passion there, Ms. Kirkland.
I understand, they just can't speak for themselves. I have to speak on behalf of my dogs.
Understood.
So, I understand, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Vera Kirkpatrick, and I live in Larry's district, I don't know what district it is, but I'm glad that we care about animals and all, but let's also not forget about babies. Remember, in November, we're gonna be voting on the ordinance to make San Angelo a sanctuary city for the babies. The animal sanctuary is no-kill, so let's have San Angelo a no-kill area for babies. Thank you.
Thank you, Vera.
I'm Cinni Flores, and I'm in...
Put the mic up a little bit, Cinni, so we can hear you.
I'm Cinni Flores, and I'm in District Six, and I'm also on the board for Country Valley Paws, and I know there's some changes that really need to happen and some dialogue. Paws has offered several solutions to the city, like building kennels so that the dogs could move out to those while that row is being cleaned. We were not taken up on those offers. Multiple offers have been made that nobody's taken us up on, and it was, we were gonna pay for it. The other thing is, spay and neuter needs to be enforced, it is not being enforced like it should. The number of citations given to the number of animals being redeemed monthly is a huge I myself experienced a situation the other day where I picked up a dog that was way more than I could handle, and that's a lot, he was very strong, and I went to turn him into the shelter, and I was told that because of the Good Samaritan program that they're doing, that I would need to keep him for three days before I could turn him in. I was not, I didn't have a safe place to keep him, and I don't think that is necessarily a good policy to follow. If somebody can't keep it, and they are picking up an animal to put him somewhere safe, what I was told is to, that one, I shouldn't have picked him up, or two, that I could take him and put him back where I found him, which was on the street, and I just, I don't think that's a good policy. There are many things that need to change. The volunteers being pulled was not done by Paws, that was done by the manager of the shelter, and I was there when that phone call came through, because of pictures supposedly that were being taken, that day, the pictures that were being taken were dogs that were available for adoption and not bad pictures, and so it was that we had a lot of volunteers lined up to walk dogs, and we were told we could not utilize them. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Additional public comment? With no more additional public comment, we're gonna move into the consent agenda. I'll start down the row here and see if anybody has anything. Larry, have you got anything to pull?
I'd like to pull J.
Larry wants to pull J. Karen?
Larry on J, though.
Okay, Lucy?
No, sir.
Harry?
Sir.
Mr. Hebert? With all of those comments, we would like to take a motion to approve the consent agenda for all items except J. Could I have that motion?
So moved.
First by Karen, second by Harry, y'all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Passes, six zero. All items except J. Do we have any public comment on the consent agenda? With that, we'll go ahead and move forward with the motion. Thank you, Karen. Okay, item J, second reading of an ordinance for Z2216 to rezone properties from the ranch and estate to the single-family residential and neighborhood commercial zoning districts being 31.17 acres located northwest of Arden Road and FM 2288. John James, do you have some questions? Larry?
Yes, may go beyond the scope of your involvement with it, but what I'm concerned about is the lack of green zones, green areas within neighborhoods being built. The Bluffs doesn't have a park, and it seems kind of ridiculous for an area like that that doesn't have one. Now we're talking about this area out there, and I don't know that I see any movement towards a park out there. I had a conversation with a gentleman earlier, and we used to have an ordinance that dealt with those neighborhood parks and the construction of housing developments with a green zone. I think it's part and parcel of a neighborhood to have a green zone out there.
Yeah, that is really beyond, well, it's definitely beyond this item, but I don't know about the past, I do know many cities do have what are called parkland dedication ordinances, so when new subdivisions come in, they have to set aside a small percentage for parkland. We do not have that here, but that is something that you all could consider in the future.
And if that's something I would like to direct staff to bring back, some options for you to review, we can do that. As long as I've been here, we have never had a park dedication ordinance, but it's not a bad idea at all.
Thank you, John.
Tom?
Karen, did you have something?
I would like to respond to Rick and say, yes, I would be grateful if you would bring that to us for our review.
We'll bring some options, and it may take a little bit to put all that together to get you a good package of what we think may work in San Angelo, but we'll bring that back, and...
Wonderful.
Can I have a motion on that, please, Larry?
I'll make a motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
First by Larry, second by Tommy Hebert, all in favor of item J, say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Approve, six zero. With that, we will close the consent agenda and move into the regular agenda. Comments regarding the items on regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed, as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appellants are exempt from the time limit above, and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. We are going to go into item A. There's a huge crowd here, we're going to go into the administration of oath of office for Fire Chief Patrick Brody. Presentation made by Daniel Valenzuela.
Yes, we have been trying to coordinate swearing-in ceremony for the chief. He took office actually over, what was it, over a month ago, but we wanted to make sure that we did that officially. We're very proud to have Chief Brody on staff with us. I've had the absolute pleasure of working with him for the last three years, on the resolutions committee meetings with the firefighters association. He does a tremendous job, I've been impressed with the work he's done, and I expect the same moving forward as the chief. And with that said, we do have Judge Gilbert here to do the swearing-in, if the two of you would move forward and get that done, we look forward to welcoming our new chief.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties?
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of?
Of the office of?
City of San Angelo Fire Chief.
City of San Angelo Fire Chief.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my abilities?
And will to the best of my abilities.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
Oh, my God. Wow, so first of all, I'm blown away by the outpouring of support from our citizens and the men and women of the San Angelo Fire Department. I mean, if y'all can see the back of the room, it's amazing. This next part's really hard. I'd like to introduce my wife, and first of all, this time of year, my allergies are killing me, so...
[laughing]
So I'd like to introduce my wife, she has been my rock, my support, in all these years, Kristy Brody. If I gotta do it, so do you. With that, that's all I have, 'cause I don't think I can hold it together much longer.
With that, we're gonna shoot some pictures. Well, let's get all the fire department up here to take a photo with them.
Absolutely.
Kristy, don't go away, you gotta stay up here. Get all the fire department up front, please.
Brian, dude. Mr. Dunn, you also.
Chief Dunn.
Dunn's gotta come up, Brian.
Chief Dunn, you're being requested as well, sir.
Don't act like you don't like being in the front.
Mark makes a dream work.
Doing great.
Hey, don't be going away, bubba, we got a council and staff.
We all want our photo op with our favorite fire chief.
Hebert, you're killing the picture there, he.
[laughing]
Trying to do the photo op.
Yes, exactly.
Sign your life away there, Mr. Brody.
Read this first.
That just means you're open to phone calls 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 366 on a leap year, it's all in.
Can't read all your bases.
He's signing to guarantee some bonds also over there.
Yes. Kinda glad they got Judge Gilbert out of bed to come in here and sign him in.
[laughing]
At least he's wearing pants, all right, with his boots in the pants.
Had to delay his tea time.
Exactly, yeah. This did get into his golf game. All right, with that, let's move on to agenda item B, consider approving the purchase of software from Civic Rec for online payments, event ticket sales, and web-based reservations of field, pavilion, park, pool, and facility rentals, sports leagues and parties in the amount of $29,710 plus an annual recurring cost of $17,272 plus a 5% annual increase, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Brent Casey, you are on.
Good afternoon, or good morning, sorry. Thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you guys. Yes, we're obviously in the world of online things, so Parks and Recreation is not up in the times, so we'd like to get it up into the times and allow people to be able to do everything online, basically all reservations for parks, pavilions, sporting events, date night tickets, everything that we do, pool reservations, everything. So right now, they have to come in, customers have to come in and fill everything out in our office at 702 South Chaburn, and we give them the, after they sign the contract, and we give them their copy and their receipt, and they go on and do their business. With this program, if approved, then we will be able to do everything online, but we will still offer that in-person thing at all of our locations, so it would put basically everything Park and Recreation has, so the Nature Center, Station 618, everything that we do from our office, the pool, everything will be able to be done that way. The pool, everything will be able to be done that way, which will make it much better for the customers. Lake gates as well, which would be a major change to how the public works because right now, we man the gates March through September, the first weekend of September, and we're there on the weekends and at holidays, so it's hard to get someone to work that every weekend and every holiday. And we get a lot of complaints about that not being able to go online from internal and external customers, so it would also put that online as well. So summer camp registrations is another thing. It would relieve the stress, a lot of stress from especially our administrative staff, but all of our staff in Parks and Recreation. It would be a major hassle to get set up and it would take sixteen to twenty weeks to get set up and running, but we would be able to get that going. Civic Rec, or I'm sorry, yeah, Civic Rec comes highly recommended. Julia actually has it and that's what we use for your, it's the same company that we use for your agendas. It's compatible with our financial system and would integrate easily with our CASA webpage. So go right in there and it would just be click here if you want to reserve it. So everything that we have for Parks and Recreation, looking at a park, you want to reserve that park, the link's right there. The cost, as you said, is twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. I did negotiate a three thousand dollar discount off of that first year price because we already have it with Julia, same company, Civic Plus. So that drops it down to twenty-six thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. The annual starting in the second year would be seventeen thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars. And I would break that out into three ways. We've got Roger from Parks who has agreed to pay a third and Shane has agreed to pay a third from Water. So it would break, come to five thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars with the five percent increase every year. Five percent increase, I wasn't too concerned about. We already paid two and a half percent for team sidelines and we pay them twenty-four hundred dollars a year to use their services, which this would take over that plus so many other things. First question's gonna be, where am I gonna get that twenty-nine thousand? I have it sitting in an account right now if you approve it. So I've moved everything that Recreation would use to one account. And if it's approved, we can go ahead and move forward with that purchase with the money that we have.
Julia, does that, or maybe this is a question for Tina. Everybody's got set aside their fifty-seven hundred. And do you have your money set aside for this too? It all goes in, so it's not a question. So my question to you, Brent, is does this help you catch some things that we hadn't caught before?
Yes, sir.
And you think, can you expand upon that?
Well, I think it's gonna increase our revenue for basically everything because we do get a lot of complaints about people have to come into our office for everything, basically. Everything that's not a sport done through team sidelines because it doesn't allow people to reserve anything. It just runs the sport and does that for us. This will take care of that so we can get rid of the team sidelines. So that's part of the five thousand right there for recreation portion. And then this works right with our finance department, so there's no fee. Like, we have to pay team sidelines two point five percent and thirty cents for every transaction, I believe it is. So there's no fee to Civic Rec. It works directly with our stuff, so we've worked with finance and we've had everybody in the meetings. And it will go right into that and the charges that we already pay, which we currently pay for when people swipe their credit card, will be the same thing. So those would increase, but it wouldn't be that much and the revenue increasing would probably cover it more than easily, so.
You'll also have a lot of benefits. For the lake gates is one of the big things because he's not gonna have to staff those anymore. But the way that works, just so everybody will be clear, because that's one of the changes they're used to seeing someone there, is you go through, you pay your thing. It registers to your license plate. So as staff or police are driving through, if Rick's in there and, you know, my license plate's not in the system, then clearly I didn't get my pass and they can stop me. So that's how that works to try and register who has paid and if someone has not.
What I talked with Shane about is we would probably leave some of our people out there to get people used to doing it. So, and it could go seven days a week if we wanted to do that instead of just weekends and holidays. So anybody that goes through that gate could be responsible for paying seven days a week, so.
Trying to get those positions filled are sometimes a challenge, so this will make that type of stuff much easier and more efficient.
Someone pulls up and say they do not have the one person in the world that does not have a smartphone, they can still go to Spring Creek Marina because we do have an agreement with them that they can go over there and purchase it and put their tag on there and everything. So as Rick said, the license plate would go in. It's requirement to purchase their pass for that day or their camping pass for three days or whatever it is. And once that license plate goes in there, that's what we will print out for the report or be able to pull up either on our cell phones or on any computer and say real time, those people just paid, they're good for three days or whatever it is.
In your opinion, does this self-fund itself and pay for it?
Yes.
Any questions? Move to approve. I have a move for approval from Harry and a second from Tommy Hebert. Any public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Item passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brent.
Thanks, Brent.
Now we move to item C. Number one, an agreement with Basic IDIQ buyboard contract number five eight one nineteen in the amount of five hundred and fifty-eight thousand sixteen dollars and fifty-five cents utilizing Civic Fund Balance for McNeese Convention Center improvements and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. And item two, allocating an additional one hundred and forty thousand from Civic Events Fund Balance for window tenting and landscaping at the McNeese Convention Center. Presentation by Sidney Walker.
Morning. Pretty straightforward.
Not that straightforward, huh?
Really? Not looking that easy there, Sidney.
Looking for the slides.
It'll be coming up.
I can just... Well, I can just explain it to you all. Of course, it's pretty straightforward, trying to, your funding for our sewer line replacement, carpet and towel replacement, and wall vinyl replacement for the convention center. That costs, of course, we're going through Basic IDIQ for that. The cost for that is five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars and sixteen, five hundred and fifty-eight, sixteen dollars. Like I said, that would be going through Basic IDIQ. And on the second hand, we do have, we need one hundred and forty thousand dollars. That would be in regards to the window tenting that's needed as well as the irrigation needs, tree planting and landscaping. We are working with the Parks Department to handle the irrigation needs, tree planting, and landscaping. Any, of course, the fund balance, we would be using Civic Events' fund balance. First, we would be exhausting our restricted for facility use fees. Right now, we're sitting at three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, six hundred and thirty-four, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in there. And then we would go to our Fund for Ten balance of a million dollars and sixty-eight thousand dollars in that account. And that's the fund balance as of July thirty-first. And we would still have enough funding. Once we do exhaust those funds, we still would have enough for our ninety-day fund balance if needed.
Sid, these dollars come out of dollars that are set aside from our ticketing fees that go toward maintenance and also dollars within your budget over the time for savings. You're not asking for additional hot money.
I'm not asking for any additional money. This is from our own fund balance.
What are we gonna get for the five hundred and fifty-eight? I mean, is this addressing the sewer or... You have some general maintenance items that this is covering. Five hundred and fifty-eight's a lot of money.
This is gonna just address the sewer line replacement, the towel replacement that would be needed in our main ballroom as well. We would be also doing the wall vinyl replacement that's in the main ballroom and also on the exterior walls as well. And that's why we also need the window tenting because due to us not having any tint on those windows, it's changing the colors of the wall vinyl. So in order to prevent that, we need to just go ahead and just tint the windows. And of course, carpet replacement too as well in the hallways as well.
Any questions?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Lucy, second by Tommy Hebert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any public comment? With none, the item passes six to zero. Move to item D. Consider resolution supporting the private fundraising efforts to construct a restroom facility at Meadow Creek Park. Presentation by Carl White.
Good morning. This is to help me here, y'all, if you've noticed this. Okay, Meadow Creek Park, quick introduction, is a five point five acre neighborhood park in the Southland residential area. It was developed in nineteen seventy-nine and renovated in two thousand and eleven. It has a playground, picnic areas, tennis court, which is also converted to pickleball, a three point three mile walking trail, and a backstop, and some open area. There's a large electrical easement that bifurcates the park. We received earlier this summer a request to consider development of restrooms at the park, similar to the request at Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Park. Here is a location of Meadow Creek Park in the Southland area. It is the only park in that entire area. Closer look at the property lines. You can see on the west side is where the court is, a picnic area. You can see where the electrical easement is, the playground, and the shade structure, and a large open area. Again, it's the only park in the entire area. It's a popular park for different activities, particularly including sports practices. There are no public restrooms in the entire area. Here's an image showing the water mains and the sewer lines. We met out there a couple of times to try to figure out what would be the best location. And working with the proponent and staff, this is where we proposed to place it, on the southeast corner of the park, near the playground and the shade area. It's close to water line, sewer line, as well as electrical. See the sewer line here, the water line here, and electrical here. This is an image of what the proposed restrooms would look like. Again, this project cost is estimated two hundred and fifty thousand. Annual maintenance estimated twelve thousand dollars a year. This is the same project cost that we estimated for the other restroom project at MLK Park. Costs have gone up, but the utilities are a lot closer in this case, so we can save some money with utilities. The proponent is here, Mr. Chase Bruton, if he wants to speak to the item. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board discussed this matter at a couple of meetings and in the end, they did recommend that this move forward to city council.
Thank you. My name's Chase Bruton. I'm in District Four, Larry Miller's district. Thank you for having me. Yeah, we brought this up. This park is frequented by all and not just in the close proximity or neighborhood. There's people from across town coming out there to play on the playground, to go to practices, to play basketball, tennis, and otherwise just attend the park and the walking track. So I was there last night alone. There was probably ten different groups in just a thirty to forty-five minute period that I was there. I know that we all kind of communicate on different times. I was there for a practice for my kid for soccer at five thirty. There was people there at five o'clock to try to get there before all the traffic of other teams. So I think with our previous agenda items about raising money, Civic Rec, I think that one dollar fee per team to reserve a spot on the field is very minimal. I think that could be increased. That could raise money for this continued maintenance for all parks, everything else that you could potentially rent for. So there are questions of cost, project cost. I always question cost of that. I don't know if that looks like to you a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar value of a building and all of that, but I would say that we could maybe question local entities for a contract bid or request for proposal of those costs because I think you could do an additional pavilion to that. That would allow you some additional areas to be rented out as far as picnic tables or birthday party spots or anything like that for this park. But it is something that is needed. I am willing to at least spur off the agenda item itself on raising funds, reaching out to grants, writing grants, or just asking for, you know, community funds in general to raise money for this project alone. The additional maintenance, I would ask that you guys consider that if it could be a project that we could see moving forward and continually raising money to pay for its own maintenance. So anyway, that's the most I have for today. I appreciate you.
Chase, I mean, glad you're here bringing this up. It's one of those things, this is a park, as you say, it's visited by a lot of people. So do you realize the burden you're putting on your shoulders saying, okay, I'm gonna start this thing up and I'm gonna start down that path?
Yeah.
I mean, it's a chore and Shirley Spears is right back there too. She could give you clues about it. I love the fact that you're going through now this morning. If I understand it right, this is just a resolution, correct? So are we required to take a vote to give them, go forward? We'll do that. Does anybody have any questions from Mr. Bruton? Tommy?
No question, just a comment. While it's in Larry's district, it is within a stone's throw of where I live. I live just down the street. I can step out my front door and see the park. It is busy all the time. Chase is right. There's sports teams there year-round. If there's not sports teams, when my grandkids come, they wanna go down there and play at the park. So it is, it is a very well-used park. I like this approach with some private folks stepping forward like Mr. Bruton has here to try to raise the money because I think it's in Harry's district now, but I used to have Glenmore Park in District One until we redistricted. And it's another park that is extremely busy all the time. So I like the idea of the private sector stepping up and raising the money and then helping raise enough to then help with the ongoing maintenance, et cetera. So Tom, if you're ready, I would make a motion to move this resolution forward.
Everybody else have any questions?
I have a clarification, just a quick question for Carl. Carl, what I don't see on there is what was, of course, we have another item we'll be discussing. So it's the project cost is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus there's a ten percent as far as I understood. Is that correct? So that'd be another twenty-five thousand will be set aside in case there's any damage or anything that's done that the restroom actually needs to repair. Is that correct? I just want to make sure that we're pretty clear on that. Okay.
With that, I had a motion by Harry and a second by Larry. Is that correct?
I made the motion.
Oh, Tommy Hebert. Anyway, with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Is there any public comment? With that, the resolution passes six to. Thanks, Chase.
General, we have, you know, several districts and parks in every district too. Is that this may come back to raising maintenance or increased surplus funds is that if we audit these projects that we have moving forward, you might realize that a park that was highly frequented with things like bathrooms and additional maintenance are no longer frequented and may be audited to allow those funds to be moved over and maybe close that bathroom or something like that, you know, just to move forward. So, but I think with the, with the public awareness of this, it started with the MLK Park, moved to this park now. I think it could easily move to Glenmore Park or any others that, you know, there's enough public, you know, concern there. But I think the Civic Rec, other agenda item, could definitely play hand in hand with this on raising additional funds.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you, Chase.
Thank you.
With that done, we'll move to item E. Consider approving a maintenance operations and vandalism community-funded restroom facilities policy. Presentation by Carl.
Yes, this is related to the last item. A few months ago, staff was directed to draft a guiding document to manage and oversee all future restrooms built with community fundraising in any park. The thought behind that is if the public represented by any group requests a restroom facility to be added at a park location and are willing to raise the funds to construct it, the group should also hold some responsibility for repairing the restrooms to keep them operational. And in addition, some policies should be in place that address the operation and opening of such restrooms should there be vandalism. So this policy states to move a request forward, city council must adopt a resolution, which you just did for this one, this past one, that supports the community's fundraising efforts for the new restroom facilities. And of course, this is after it's been vetted by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. In order to have the funds needed to make repairs to the restrooms and its fixtures, the community raised funds for the construction of the restrooms will be accepted unless funding is also raised with an additional ten percent that would be placed into an account or fund dedicated to the repair and maintenance of the facility. And then once all the funds have been raised, including the additional ten percent, that would come back to city council for approval for it to be implemented and constructed. These are what you saw a few months ago. It's the same policies regarding vandalism if it happens at the restroom facility. It's basically just documenting what we already do with the facility and our staff. If there's graffiti or misuse or any kind of damage. Again, this is a repeat of what was presented before. Should there be repeat offenses of vandalism at the facility? vandalism at the facility? Again, it's just documenting what we currently do. Main difference in this policy than was presented before is the creation of this additional requirement for the 10%, additional 10% to be raised to be put, set aside into a fund for ongoing repairs and maintenance, not the daily maintenance of cleaning and servicing the facility, but the physical repair if something's damaged or needs to be replaced.
So that's what I'm not clear on, and maybe Rick, you and Carl can help here. So they set aside the extra 10%. When do we pull from that fund? And as that fund decreases, does it get replenished or does it stay right where it's at? How do you move forward with that? I don't know what that looks like.
It goes into a dedicated account, and there's a need to pull from that account. It does get depleted. It could get increased if Council chooses to add some funds to that. It could get increased, or if there's an additional restroom that is approved for construction, funds could be added to that account.
Yeah, so it would have to be added. There's no means currently in this proposal to add dollars additionally to it. Now, what you could do is, as they were talking about, you know, with the civic, this program, you know, if you, like at civic events, we have a fee, a dollar fee per ticket. So you could look at ways when people are renting pavilions or whatever at the parks or registering the kids to have a time slot, you could add whatever, $2 per that, and that goes into this fund to help maintain or one like it.
Once the initial fund's established, that fund is set, it doesn't have a way to replenish at this point. Okay.
The community is not required to continue to put money into it. You would either have to do it or designate a source.
Well, and I wanted to make sure, because I didn't know, like, if on the Meadow Creek Park, once they initiate the $250,000, put an extra 25, that they weren't required to bring additional funds back in.
And so you could happen, whereas you had some massive vandalism in there, which these bathrooms are pretty tough, but, you know, they could consume a chunk of that all at once. We haven't seen that, but, you know, it could happen.
All right. Any questions for Carl? Karen?
Does the city have established definitions of what constitutes vandalism? Or what constitutes what would?
General maintenance versus vandalism.
Yes, so there are.
So generally, those restrooms that are being constructed, you know, if the sinks are knocked off, you know, those are vandalism. If the toilet's plugged, then that's general maintenance. So that type of dramatic, they're built pretty tough, so, you know, that kind of definition.
Tommy, you got a question?
Yes. Carl, I assume, so I don't want to assume, but just from what I've seen, our city staff would be the ones doing all the maintenance, whether it be repairing the routine general maintenance or the vandalism.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions for Carl?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Harry. A second from Tommy Hebert. All in favor say aye.
Public comment.
Could we have public comment before the vote?
Absolutely. So let's open it to public comment.
Good morning, Council. My name is Shirley Spears. I'm a resident of Single Member District 5. So I had a couple of things that I'd like to get clarification on from Carl. First of all, I think this is a good idea that we're moving forward. I'm glad another park has come into the process, because we do need to make sure that we're providing an opportunity for our communities to get out and exercise and have fun and do all those things and to be comfortable as they do it. So a couple of questions if we ever defined what community is in terms of the additional funds, because in the case of the Martin Luther King Park, that resolution has already passed. And secondly, I want to clarify whether or not this in some way affects the resolution that has already been passed for Martin Luther King Park, because we never did get a clarification on what community was. So I just need to make sure you understand.
So my interpretation of this is question of whether this resolution we're having is retroactive. I don't know if we're going to go down the definition of a neighborhood park or a community park, Shirley, but I want to.
No, not the definition of the parks, but in the original presentation, it was about who would raise the money. So our resolution for Martin Luther King Park has already been approved, and so I want to make sure to your terminology, retroactive, it doesn't say anything in here that's retroactive, and our resolution was approved. So I'm just trying to be clear so that we will know what to expect, because it was approved as a resolution, and it did not have this on it, because we requested that it not be included.
I get that. So Carl or Rick, do y'all want to answer that one?
As far as the community, the thought is it could be an individual representing a neighborhood, or it could be a service organization that wants to raise the funds. So that's what we mean by community. But in terms of retroactive, I don't, in my opinion, I don't think this policy should be retroactive to the one that was previously passed.
I am in agreement with that. I think that the discussion was had before and a decision was made, and so this is coming after that decision was made. So moving forward on any other monies that are raised for other parks, then this kicks in. So actually, the retroactive wouldn't kick in for Martin Luther King Park.
Okay. We just wanted to be clear on that. I know we had had some discussion to start working with Glenmore community to get that going, and it looks like Meadowcrest has now set a standard that we can all look forward to, and I'm glad that the council is listening to what the community is needing, even though we're having to raise the funds. But I think it's something that we all need to acknowledge, is a good thing for our parks and for our communities. So I appreciate the clarification on retroactive. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. With that, is there any additional public comment? Chase?
Just, I just want to make sure, moving forward, this is, I feel like this is a big help and advocacy for the people to assist our city in maintaining a city-created park already, because there was the idea, you know, bought up at First Parks and Rec meeting that said, hey, and rather than spend on a new bathroom here, there's a resolution for a multimillion-dollar park on Valley View and College Hills. So with that, you got, you know, tax funds, no community raising money, no community raising additional maintenance, which is going to be all included on a new park. So I don't mind spearheading this idea to raise money for this bathroom. I don't want to get to a situation where that's going to be the norm, that we have to have community funds raised on city parks. That should be something that probably the city should look at maintaining moving forward.
And what I will tell you, each one of these has their own progress. I said, you take Kirby Park, which is one, you'll take Martin Luther King Park, which has a different type of financing to it. We're looking at something different for you. Every one of those has kind of its own little evergreen-growing document that changes. So what I will say is you would have to stay in touch with staff, and that would be Rick and Carl, working through all of those questions as you have them. And what I tell people is don't be hesitant. Come forward and ask those questions early.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Chase.
Could I get clarification for the minutes? When we say that this won't be retroactive to the MLK Park, that's the fundraising portion only, not the vandalism policies?
That is correct. So as far as the vandalism and what we see on, as far as the policy that we see before us, the only thing that's different for MLK Park would be that additional 10%. But everything else is still in line with them as well. So as far as the vandalism, multiple vandalisms per month, the closures, all that does apply. The only thing that doesn't is going to be the 10%.
Any additional public comment? Questions from council? With that, we've got a first and a second.
Revo, we got a motion and a second.
Are you good? We've got a motion and a second. Take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Item passes 6-0. Now we'll move to Item F, Consider Approving the Allocation of HUD Home American Rescue Plan Funding in the Amount of $1,110,165 for Proposed Projects to Reduce Homelessness and Increase Housing Stability and to Amend the 2021 Annual Action Plan to Reflect Approved Projects. Bob, you're on.
Good morning. If you recall, HUD provided $1.1 million of ARP funding to assist homeless or those at the risk of being homeless with housing, rent assistance, supportive services, or non-congregate sheltering. HUD requires that we follow the HUD CWG Home Grand Process, which includes public meetings like this one. We held several before this, and then amending the Annual Action Plan, which is forthcoming. In conjunction with the state and the national efforts to end veteran homelessness, the Contra Valley Homeless Coalition voted to set the goal of ending local veteran homelessness with support from the Texas Homeless Network. According to the annual point-in-time homeless count, there are at least six homeless veterans at any given time here in San Angelo. So the goal of ending veteran homelessness is very feasible and realistic, so we certainly encourage that. After consultation with the Texas Homeless Network and Local Homeless Coalition, staff is proposing that we support the construction or renovation of transitional or permanent shelter for homeless veterans with a minimum of eight beds with case management for each veteran. We are also proposing that we use funds for tenant-based rental assistance to help keep families in their homes who are being at risk of being homeless, which of course, staff would manage that program. Earlier this year, we put out a request for proposals for the construction of facilities and case management. We received two responses. One was from a company out of Houston, but they only provided case management proposals. They did not identify a facility which does not meet our needs. The other was from the Housing Authority of San Angelo. The proposal is to renovate the Island Cottage apartment at 51 North Cohenheim, which is a 14-unit apartment complex, and provide case management for up to 24 months. The apartments are located at Cohenheim between Harris and First Street, which is next to the Witch Building, which I believe is closed now. They are one-bedroom with a kitchen and living room, which meets the requirement for non-congregate sheltering, as HUD has identified it in their NOFA. So staff is recommending we allocate $654,410 to the Housing Authority for the renovation of the apartments and for case management. And you can see on the slide, the breakout, how we would divide those funds, $100,000 for case management and $554,000 for renovation. And we recommend $455,755 for TBRA to keep families in their homes, and that's a program that the staff, my staff, would manage and carry out. And I'd be glad to answer any questions. We have folks from the Housing Authority here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Go ahead, Lucy.
Hey, Bob. Whenever you're talking about paying for their housing, how long, I know that the case management, you said, is for 24 months. So like, how long do y'all pay for someone's rent or housing?
It's two years.
Two years?
So someone enters the system through what we call the coordinated entry. We would vet them and see if they are, in fact, veterans, and then we would place them at this location, and then we would provide the case management for two years. Hopefully, they will graduate from that, leave, and open a room for somebody else to come in and fill that room, for the same thing with case management for two years. That's the process. And the Housing Authority has a great plan to continue this. After the $100,000 is expended, they want to transfer over to the VASH program, which is a federal program that helps veterans. So the case manager will continue beyond those two years. So it's one of those situations where it's almost, you know, we have to take advantage of it.
Thank you.
Tommy?
Bob, I assume as a part of the case management, if employment is something that is needed and wanted, that would be a part of the case management, assisting with employment-type needs and desires?
Absolutely. What case manager really does is kind of captures the whole gamut of situations where, things that they need. If they need training for jobs, they provide that. If they need alcohol counseling, they provide that. If they need a ride to get their identification, they get that. Basically, it's a hands-on, long-term case management to get that person successfully graduating out of that situation into permanent housing. And that's where the Housing Authority is such a great partner, because once they get out of this 24 months, well, guess what? Housing Authority has vouchers for them to stay continuously, long-term, you know. So it's a great partnership.
Thank you.
Harry, did you have a question?
Yeah, a couple comments. As a veteran, I support anything we can do to get these veterans off the street. Bob, there are a lot of organizations in the community that want to support veterans and their families once they transition into permanent housing, whatever that is. So there are, I could be point of contact, because I'm part of many veterans' organizations, but we certainly want to be helpful in however we can do that. And I know sometimes veterans want to do what they need to do, but I know when they move into their own housing, whether an apartment or whatever, sometimes they don't have anything except a bed. We can provide all the rest of that kind of stuff. So if you'll just keep in contact with me, I'll go ahead and get the rest of the veterans' organizations together.
I certainly appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, well, we've already did that about four or five weeks ago with a young military man, his wife, and an 18-year-old daughter that moved into a house, but they didn't have anything. And we got them furniture, we got them pots, pans, linens, everything for the bathroom. I mean, it was just, so we'll work on it. And I just want to make sure that we get these folks off the street and get them whatever help they need, as Tom said. Tommy said that we, you know, we move them to that next level, because we don't want them back out there again.
Absolutely.
I've got a question. How many units?
14 units, but we're going to have to earmark eight. That's the requirement, because six is what, that's the number that we need to, at least have six. With two, that gives us a little bit of flexibility. So when we apply for recognition and certification of ending veteran homelessness, they ask for that. How many beds do you have available for your average number of homeless veterans? And you get that from the point-in-time count. And for us in San Angelo, it's six. So you got to have six. We're going to have eight, eight units available for them, and hopefully, they'll be transitioning in and out. But originally, we can have more. Don't get me wrong. I'm saying is eight's going to be earmarked. It's a 14 apartment complex unit, so early on, there's opportunities for 14 veterans to go in. If they're all veterans, that's great. We'll go in there. But as they weed out and somebody else comes in, we don't want an empty room, so we want to make sure.
That's my question. In transition, if you're going to, if we're going to move forward with this, let's move forward with it right. Let's not have an empty room. So is there a plan to, I hate to say, search these people out, but I think, do we, are we able to locate them and keep it to provide the service?
Yes, sir. Thank you. And the plan is actually through the coordinated entry. That's a statewide program, maybe national, but it's a statewide program where actually, it is a coordinated system where nonprofits, partners can introduce individuals into that system, and it pops up, and we know who is a veteran or not. And then we vet them, and then we get them in that place. That's kind of like, that's the process.
Okay. Answered my question. Any additional questions?
Move to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Harry. I have a second by whom?
Lucy.
By Lucy? All in, any public comment? We should have a mic that we could just let you have right there.
Hi, dear Kirkpatrick. And I'm just wondering two things. My husband's retired, was retired military, and we've always been very concerned about the veterans. But I'm wondering, in this counseling, will there be any Christian counseling? Because today, they've taken God out of everything, and we know, my opinion is, that if we don't allow them to have some Christian counseling in all of this, how much good will it be? So I really hope that that will be done. And also, have, has there been research with other areas? You know, the VA. I've been involved in that for years, and it always gets all the money, and then it always is, something happens. it always is, something happens to the money, and nobody knows where it went. So let's make sure that we've checked with other organizations and made sure that this can work.
Vera, we hear you. Number one, the VA part's kind of a federal, so we don't have much say in that one coming forward. I was going to defer to one of them if they're here to answer that as far as the, I would assume these are probably nominational, or I don't know what the religion has, and I'm sure everybody's free to do what they choose. But we'll let her come up and answer the question right quick.
Yeah, that's important, I think.
I think she's going to answer that for us right quick, Vera.
Rebecca Salandy. I'm with the Housing Authority. We do have partnerships with faith-based organizations. If the veteran is open to that, we welcome that. Hear me. I'm sorry.
Well, that was too short and too quick of an answer. We can't do that concise.
Not going to get away with that. We do partnership with faith-based organizations. As long as a veteran is open to that, they can receive counseling through that.
Well, I'm available to volunteer.
Okay, great.
We'll make sure you have Vera's number before you leave. All right. Did you have additional public comment?
No, unless y'all have further questions. We are partnering with the VA, so they will have a case manager. We've ran a similar program like this since 2011, so we house 23 veterans currently, and we'll just be adding eight more to that.
All right. I think that's awesome. Any more questions?
Quick one. The facility has 14 spaces, correct, and you're going to earmark eight, which is two in excess of your current count, average count locally. So the 14 minus eight, what, how will those be utilized if not for veterans?
So the other units are already occupied, but if we had another veteran, like say one of the other 23 that wanted to live at Country Cottage, we would put additional veterans in there. Otherwise, the purpose of purchasing Country Cottage or Island Cottage is transitional housing for homeless. So other people experiencing homelessness could be referred by our rapid rehousing. They may not be veterans, but they would be offered a bed outside of that eight or a unit.
Thank you.
I have a question. Yes, I just wanted to ask you, when will you start remodeling? And then when do you think you will, y'all will start with this project to have them move in and all, and it go off?
So we have the eight units vacant, and so we're just waiting for the approval from you. We've partnered with Galilee Community Development. They'll be doing the actual renovations. So we'll get started as soon as y'all are, as soon as this is approved and they're ready.
See if we can't help you out with that in about 30 seconds. Any additional public comment? Any additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Item passes six oh. Item G, Discussion and Consideration of Matters Related to the Fiscal Year 2022 through 2023 Operating Budget, including First Reading and Public Hearing of an Ordinance Approving and Adopting the Budget for the Fiscal Year Beginning October 1, 2022 and Ending September 30, 2023. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by $7,307,295, 17.42%. And of that amount, $534,154 is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll. And item number two, Conducting a Separate Vote to Ratify the Property Tax Revenue Increase Reflected in the Budget and Place the Adoption of This Tax Rate on the Agenda for September 22, a Regular Meeting, which is a Thursday, that's a reminder, of the City Council as an action item. Presentation made by Tina Dersky.
Thank you. Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. As you just read, this is the first public hearing of the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2023, and we will conduct a separate record vote to ratify the property tax revenue. This is just a graph showing all funds, all funds revenues, general fund being 41.5% of the total, and enterprise funds making up 34.4%. And then, of course, expenses, personnel making up 43.7% and O and M 42.4%. Okay, so in this budget that we are asking you to approve through the ordinance, we have included the increase for health insurance. We've included an increase for raises for personnel. CDL additional pay has been included. Equipment replacement is included in the budget at an amount of $200,000. We will have a one-time funding source that we'll show you later to shore up the $458 that Shane had requested. And then we've also made adjustments for property casualty insurance. We've also included new positions for animal services, the IT cybersecurity analyst, the public works grant administrator, and the HR benefits administrator. Additional funding that's being presented here for equipment replacement, I mentioned the $258,000. We're recommending a one-time funding source for that of sales tax surplus and the intergovernmental fund fund balance, as well as for the bunker gear replacement program. We had brought an amount of approximately half a million dollars to you when we had our budget workshop. Chief Brody has shored up that amount, and it is going to be just over $366,000 for that. And then we would also increase the amount that we are transferring for the fire truck replacement by $200,000 using leftover CRF funds. More additional funding would be charity care. We usually try to pay for that through the, pay for the peak hours ambulance with the charity care money that we receive from Medicaid. And also, whatever's left over, we would recommend using for additional ambulance replacement. And then, of course, you are aware of the employee stipend, stipend in the amount of about $3.1 million using our PA funds. Also included in the budget for hotel tax, destination marketing organization, and the amount of $950,000 with the potential for an additional $62,000 based on performance. We're also including $25,000 for art in uncommon places, $25,000 for the water lily garden for wayfinding, and then, of course, an additional $25,000 for downtown San Angelo, making a contribution to them, and even $100,000 from the city. These next few slides are just the language that's included in the budget ordinance. None of this has changed from last year, but we include it just to make you aware of what you are adopting. And this just is showing all the ways that the budget can be changed and amended, excuse me. I won't read through all of this, but I will let you kind of look over it, see if you have any questions on these slides.
I have a question.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Tina, I want to hear, slides you have CDL. What does that stand for?
That's the driver's license. I think it's commercial driver's license.
Okay. I was in a, I knew what CDL meant, but I didn't know if that meant the same in our, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now, also, does this have somewhere in there, last time when we were talking about the employees, we were talking about the people on call. Is there any kind of?
Let Brian answer that question.
So when employees get called out, particularly, I think, Councilmember Thomas and you also mentioned, you know, when somebody comes out to fix a water leak in the middle of the night, to make sure that they're compensated appropriately. Daniel has authorized double time every time somebody's called out, regardless of whether or not they've, they've reached, you know, overtime or not. If they're called out to fix a water leak or something like, to that, you know, extreme situation, then they'll be compensated double time for that.
Thank you. That's what I needed to know.
Oh, don't leave so fast, Brian.
[laughing]
Does this step with staff, in your opinion, help bridge the gap to make it better for us in the future as far as retention of employees and sustaining that? Are we sustainable?
I think the things that we've done, of course, loyalty pay last year, and the things we're doing this year, put us in dramatically better place. What we've seen, we've seen an uptick on applications already, and I think some of that's just the words getting around. Now, hopefully that bears out, and that, you know, obviously I don't have numbers to show you, but hopefully, next year during the budget workshops, I can come to you and say, we're no longer at 18%. We're, I mean, I would love it if we were at eight, even though that's still historically high. It would be a dramatic improvement. And I think we have positioned ourselves to definitely lower, lower that gap for sure.
Thank you, Brian. I had a question. We're using some money out of the sales tax fund. Do you know just off the top of your head what that fund balance is? Just to-
Pull that up.
Right. Because what we're pulling from there is miniscule, is it not, as far as what the balance is?
Yes.
We've got 1.2 or 1.4.
Is there?
As I would point out, that it'll just be, there's about half a million dollars in the intergovernmental fund fund balance. So that will cover, first, we'll use that first, and then we'll go to sales tax surplus. So it won't be this entire 366 plus the 258. It'll just be whatever the incremental amount is. That'll be out of sales tax.
Here to date, we're just under $700,000 over revenue. So any payment that we receive in September is all marginal revenue to the general fund fund balance.
So the total balance? No, just the sales tax balance. Is it 700?
700.
After this is pulled?
Before this is pulled.
All right. Thank you. Any additional questions? Can I get a motion?
We have a certain-
Do we have to say certain verbiage?
Yeah.
We got to do this one individually.
Thank you. Okay. Do you want them to do?
Yeah, let's do this separate.
Okay. So the first one will be approving the ordinance adoption.
So do we have a motion on that and a second? Who was that? I forgot. Have you got the motion for this one? Do you have a first and a second?
Karen gave the first.
Okay, Karen was first. Who was second?
Second.
Tommy Hebert was second, whether I like it or not. Okay. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Public comment?
Public comment. We've done. Okay, now we vote individually, correct?
I thought it was the second one.
That's what the specific language.
Tell me the process. What's the next step? Want individual vote?
We've got a, we've got a motion and a second. No public comment, so we'll just do an individual vote on each of these.
Okay. Larry, we'll start with you.
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Six ayes, no opposed. Motion approved, six zero.
And then the second item is to ratify the property tax revenue increase. And this one, we do need this specific caption language read out before the vote.
Does each person need to read this or just one?
Just one person can read it.
Okay, we're going on item two. We're going to conduct a separate vote to ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the budget and place the adoption of this tax on the agenda for the September 22, 2022 Regular Meeting in the City Council as an action item. Now, each one of us vote independently. Larry?
Approve. Aye.
You're, if you're making the motion, we need a second from someone else.
I have made the motion. Lucy gives me a second. Any public comment? With that, we'll start the individual votes. Larry?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Are we rolling into H? Introduction of the Ordinance Levying Property Taxes for the City of San Angelo for the 2022 tax year. Public hearing and first reading of an ordinance fixing and levying ad valorem taxes for the current tax year for use and support of the municipal government of the City of San Angelo, Texas for the 2022 and 2023 budget year, providing for the assessment and collection thereof, providing when the tax shall become due, providing when the tax shall become delinquent, providing for exemptions, providing for severability, providing for publication on the city-operated website, and providing for an effective date. Presentation made by Tina.
Okay, so this is the property tax levy. As you know, we're proposing a rate of 0.7379 per $100 valuation. And this is how it's broken out. 0.1007 of it goes to debt service, 0.6312 for M and O, 0.006 for the street infrastructure fund, for a total of 0.7379. This is the language that we need for this particular motion.
Okay, I will make the motion. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.7379 per 100 valuation, which is effectively a 12.89% increase in the tax rate.
If I may. So our previous tax rate was a 776. So that tax rate is actually coming down to 7379. The way that it's read, it's required by law, this read this way because a question always comes up, wait a minute, are y'all increasing the property tax rate? No, we're not increasing the property tax rate. It's actually being reduced. So again, I just want to make sure that I made that clear.
We would be reminiscent, Mayor Gunter is watching at the time. We are not increasing taxes, but just as Daniel said, the way this is written, it increases the volume. With that, we'll go ahead and take a vote. Larry?
We need a second and public comment?
I'll need a second.
I got it.
Second by Lucy. I thought you did that a minute ago.
We're doing it again.
All right. Now can we vote, Julia? Any public comment? They've been so kind. Larry, we'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Motion passes six oh. With that, we'll move into closed session, executive session, under the provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirements that Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections: A, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Regarding Litigation with Online Streaming Services; B, Section 551.071, Consultation with the Attorney Regarding West Texas Water Partnership; Section C, or Item C, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding the City Landfill. With that, we will probably be gone for about an hour? We'll be back when we're back.
There you go.
As we move into closed session. Discussion of anything that's coming out of closed session. We'll look at follow-up and administrative issues. Consider items discussed in executive session. We've already done. Announcement and consideration of future agenda items. Does anybody have anything to add on a future agenda?
No, sir.
Councilmember Thompson.
That landscape thing.
It was mentioned earlier during the budget proceedings that our next meeting is September 22. Just to reiterate for the public, that is a Thursday.
Absolutely.
Move, we adjourn.
And does anybody else, other than the city clerk, have something else to throw in?
[laughing]
With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move, we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. We are finished for the day.
Do we need to vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye enough.